All right, this is the Town of Monroe Pension Committee and OPEB Board of Trustees Joint Meeting, Thursday, April 28th, it is 6:17. Uh, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to meet your right phone unless you are speaking. Anybody participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any of the member of the bodies or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call. Unless the vote is unanimous, the chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. All right, we are called to order. Uh, Ron, do you mind running through the roll calls since I don't know who's there or not there?
Uh, you know what, I don't have a list.
You want me to take it?
Yeah, could you?
I would love you to take it, yes.
All right, for, uh, taking a role for OPEB Chairman Vitello.
Here.
Vice Chair Manjos.
Here.
Uh, Kellogg, I'm here. Finance Director Bonavsky.
Here.
Council Chairman Formicella.
Here.
Thank, for the Pension Committee Chairman Mike Manjos.
Here.
Uh, Vice Chair Kirsch, we believe is absent tonight. Myself, Kellogg here, Superintendent Schools Cobza is not going to make it tonight. Uh, Council Chairman Formicella.
Here.
Council Member Maurer.
Here.
Board of Ed Representative Condon.
Here.
Board of Ed Representative Kapoor, we believe is absent this evening, and Town Treasurer Patrick O'Hara is also absent this evening. Think we have a call for both? Yeah.
I believe we do.
Okay.
All right, so first item is review of minutes. First, the Pension Committee. Uh, if somebody wants to make a motion, I know there's going to be a few, uh, changes to the minutes.
So, uh, that the minutes be approved with the following changes. Uh, one that the pension, oh, we're doing, uh, it's a joint meeting, so it's kind of hard to.
Right, so we can cover both, yeah.
Cover both. The Pension Committee Member Dave Ferris should be removed as he's not a member uh, as being present. I believe, uh, Mr. Vitello, you said you were on the phone during that meeting?
He was on the call, yes.
So he should be reflected as present. Um, all members who are participating remotely for the new FOI rules need to be indicated as they're, uh, that they were remote. And I don't remember who else was remote, although I bet Mr. Manjos was.
Yeah.
I was remote, yes. Good bet. I'm always moving.
He's the trailblazer when it comes to remote.
Yeah, you're remote in more ways than one, Mike.
That's right. Uh, let's see, what else? Mr. Formicella earlier noted that on page two, the motion to nominate Mike Manjos as Pension Committee Board. Uh, that should, that should read, Mike Manjos as OPEB Board Vice Chairman.
Right.
OPEB Board of Trustees Vice Chairman.
Okay.
I think that was everything else. People found some other, uh.
We have a second.
Second is amended.
Now, why did it take two conferences? Um, and I would ask.
Uh, I was gonna say, any further discussion?
I just don't know if the voting record is also.
Uh, the vice chair voting record is correct.
Okay.
It's listed as OPEB Committee Board Vice Chairman for Mike Manjos passing.
Okay.
Uh, and the Dave Ferris aspect would change on the voting record.
And anyone who's remote, does that mean?
And every, right, right. Okay, so I got.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Anybody opposed? Okay, here, hearing none, and we are passed affirmatively unanimously. Now we have the OPEB Board of Trustees. And it's voting record. Somebody make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes as, uh, as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This, I would just note for the record that with the exact same amendments that were provided in the prior, uh, the prior motion for Pension Committee.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, anybody opposed? Hearing none, we're approved unanimously.
Yes.
So we are moving to new business, defined benefit plan quarterly review, and we will turn it over to Devin.
All right, thank you, everyone. Great to see you all. I am going to bring my screen up. Um, I can still see faces, but the people in the conference room are very small, and then I know Mike and Mike are on the phone. So please speak up if you have a question or if I go through something too quickly. Um, so just before we get into the fiduciary governance calendar, I just wanted to point out that we are bringing back our client conference. We've missed a couple of years thanks to COVID, um, but the conference will be taking place in Newport on Friday, June 17th. And the previous night, we have either a sunset sale or a clam bake. We'd love to have, uh, any and all participate. So, um, in the electronic report, there's actually a QR code which you can scan with your phone if you'd like, and that will take you to the registration. So it's usually a great day full of lots of informative content, uh, and it's kind of fun, too. So if you're interested, please join us. Um, okay, so the governance calendar this quarter is pretty light. It's just a, um, a portfolio expense analysis. So on page seven, we have the all-in fees for the town and Board of Ed pension plans. So the weighted average investment management fees are 52 basis points or 0.52%. The custodial fees that are charged by principal are three basis points on the first 50 million, and plan assets fall below 50 million. Um, there are a couple account-based fees as well, um, that don't really add up too much. And then fiduciance fee is a flat fee which has an inflationary escalator of 3%. Um, so in 2021, that was, um, the approximate fees paid were about 39,000 to fiducian, which, um, translates to 13 basis points. So when you add all of that together, the 52 basis points for investment management fees, the three basis points for custodial fees, and then the 13 basis points for consulting fees, that works out to an all-in fee of 0.68%. So you're well below 1% in terms of cost of managing the pension program. And then on the OPEB, it's a little bit lower because we don't use any active management. So investment management fees are seven basis points or 0.07%. Uh, again, principal, it's, uh, three basis points on the first 50 million of assets, and all of the assets are aggregated together. Um, so you don't, that 10,000 minimum for principal does not come into, come into play. And then fiducient has a 25 basis point, um, fee for management or oversight of the OPEB plan. So OPEB's all-in fees are at 35 basis points or 0.35%. So any questions on the fees at all? Great, we have just a quick snapshot of funded status on slide nine. Um, Hooker and Holcomb only does a full valuation report every other year. Um, they did, it, for some reason, we have a 2019 and a 2020. Um, it's too bad that a 2021 won't be done because, um, I'm sure that you would have seen a vast improvement in funded status because it was a great year for asset returns. Um, but you do see funded status of more than 90% for both of the plans. You see a, uh, realistic return assumption of 6.75. I know that there's been a fair amount of discussion over the years about potentially bringing that down. Um, but, you know, 6.75 is better than many, uh, towns in the state of Connecticut. Um, so all things considered, your plan is, is very healthy particularly compared to other municipal plans. All right, so before we get into the capital markets, any questions about governance? Okay, so, um, as Ron pointed out, certainly a tough quarter. Um, so we start the economic and market review on slide 11. You know, there were a lot of factors that were weighing on, uh, markets and, and on the economy over the course of the quarter. Of course, there was the Russian invasion of Ukraine and, um, war in Europe. There was also the Fed beginning its rate hike campaign and very significant inflation. So all of those things had a negative impact on market returns. And if you look on the top right-hand side of slide 11, you can see that both bond indices and equity indices were negative in the quarter, which has happened only 16 times since 1976. So the last, you know, 45 years or so, um, that's happened only 16 times, and this was one of the times. Um, there also was a, it did not, uh, the yield curve flattened quite substantially during the quarter. It didn't invert during the quarter, but it did invert shortly after. So during the first week in April, we had a, a quick yield curve inversion. And what a yield curve inversion means, usually it's comparing the two-year treasury to the 10-year treasury, and an inversion would indicate that the two-year is paying a higher yield than the 10-year. So that yield curve inversion did happen very briefly in the first week of April. It has since come back to a normal sloped curve. Um, but the reason that that's significant is a lot of times folks think that a yield curve inversion is a signal of an impending recession. What you see on the bottom right-hand side of this page just points out that historically, when we have experienced a yield curve invasion, inversion, most of the time, both the S and P and the Barclays Aggregate Index are positive over the course of the next 12 months. And usually, we're looking at about a two-year period before we see a, um, recession. So yield curve inversion can be indicative of a lot of different things. It's not necessarily like, oh, my goodness, the yield curve inverted and we're bound to have a recession within the next six months. That typically is not the way it plays out. And if you look at the bottom left-hand side, although GDP estimates have come down compared to what estimates were at the end of last year, they still are positive, um, for the year. So we're looking at an estimate of 2.6% global growth worldwide, 2.4% in the US, a bit lower in, uh, the EU and the UK. And then China, um, you know, is interesting. The, the estimate that's shown here is 4.8% Chinese. The Chinese government says that they're aiming for 5.5%. We think, and, and most folks think that that's, um, not likely to be achieved. Um, but, you know, that's quite a, a bit more substantial than, um, what we are expecting domestically. But given how quickly China has grown in recent years, that is, um, actually quite a substantial decline for them. That, that expected growth rate of 4.8%. Um, so, you know, all things considered, the economic picture actually looks fairly good. Um, so if we start with the labor market, labor market is really, really tight. So right now, there are about 11 million job openings and only 6 million people who are unemployed and looking for jobs. So that means that there's a delta of 5 million jobs that are waiting to be filled with not enough people to fill them. Unemployment is really low. It's at about 3.6% with the expectation that it's going to be coming down, uh, for the remainder of this year and for next year. So, um, that actually means rising wages for, um, for most folks in the United States, which is going to lead to a healthy consumer. Um, so that's actually, you know, kind of a good, uh, a good economic indicator. And then in terms of inflation, you know, we saw an inflation reading of 8.5%. The most recent reading that came out, that's obviously a sky-high number. If you look at break-even inflation rates for the next five years and 10 years, um, still higher than what we have experienced in recent history. But remember that inflation has been extremely muted recently. So the five-year break-even inflation rate is just under 3.5%, and the 10-year is just under 3%. So long-term, big picture, those are not unreasonably high inflation rates. Um, and, you know, there are a lot of factors that, uh, contribute to inflation readings. Some of them, we think, are high in a transitory manner. Um, so oil prices remain very high. We think that should subside. Um, there's been a, a chip shortage which has led to kind of a backlog of, um, cars. People want cars and aren't able to get them. We're starting to see that's the supply-demand imbalance kind of level out and, uh, and more cars are becoming available. And then food prices have been high, and we expect to see those prices come down as well. So those are the factors that we think are a bit more transitory. There are some stickier inflationary factors. One of them is the wage growth that I already mentioned. Um, so that's likely to persist for much longer, but again, that benefits the consumer. Um, and then what also is likely to be persistent is, um, shelter. So, um, home prices have increased quite substantially. That trickles to the rental market. So, um, we should see prices for housing and rent, um, continue to be high. So we think inflation will come down from the levels that we're seeing right now, but we don't expect it to come down to, you know, the, the 2% Fed target, um, that we've long been trying to. And then just in terms of market returns on page 13, it's a pretty dire picture. So there are only two asset classes which are positive year-to-date through the end of the first quarter. You have to scroll all the way to the right-hand side to see that, and those are real assets and commodities. Your portfolio does have some exposure to those areas of the market through the Principal Diversified Real Assets Fund. So you've got a little bit of inflation protection, and, and those are really the areas of the market that do well in a highly inflationary environment. But bond markets, equity markets across the board really struggled, um, over the course of the quarter and continue to struggle. So just to give you a more recent snapshot through last night's close of business, the Barclays Aggregate Index was down 8.9%. So that's bonds, that's, you know, what you expect to be your safety net. But if you think about the interest rate environment, you've had a really substantial increase in interest rates so far this year. So the 10-year treasury started the year at 1.63%. It's now at 2.85%. So that's been an increase of more than 120 basis points just over the course of not even four full months. Um, and when interest rates rise, bond prices fall. So that's why you see a substantially negative, um, return for the Barclays Aggregate Index. However, when you have interest rates rising, that means that the yield on bonds is increasing. So it has a negative impact on price returns, but in terms of income, it's, it's a rosier picture for bonds looking forward. So that's just something to keep in mind. Um, and then in terms of the equity markets, um, you know, large cap held up a little bit better than small cap. International developed held up a little bit better than emerging markets. Um, but you've continued to see decline. So through last night's close of business, the S and P was down 11.8%. Um, and the Russell 2000, which is small-cap stocks, were down 15.8%. But again, that doesn't mean that we can't see a positive result when we close out the year. And, you know, just to, to bring things back to first quarter of 2020, when you saw, you know, equity markets just fell off a cliff, and then by year-end, they were in positive territory. And we were talking about declines of more than 30% then. Um, so, uh, I, I say that just to, to remind you that, um, it's perhaps not as dire as, as things seem, and there are some positive economic factors that we think could lead to, uh, strong markets. Um, so.
Devin, can I just, um, ask you a couple of questions on the macro level from you guys? Just your opinions on a couple of things is, because I am one of those people who believe the yield curve inversion does indicate something. Um, but what, what do you expect the Fed's next move is going to be? And do you think that's already priced in, or do you think that could affect the market going forward, short-term?
I do think it's already priced in. I think it's, it's, we, we think it's likely to be 50 basis points.
As do I, and I think it is priced in as well. I just want to get it on the, you know, everybody on the same page. And then, uh, I think I read today that they did have negative GDP growth for the first quarter.
Right, um, and, uh, I, I heard something that, um, given the factors that were in the, the fourth quarter, it was, um, not that, that the negative number was expected, but that it, it would have been really hard to see any sort of, you know, positive, um, trend in the first quarter, but that the expectation is that Q2, 3, and 4 are likely to be a little bit better. Um, so, you know, maybe we won't come in at that rate of, uh, of 2.6%, which is the most recent estimate. But, um, you know, somewhere around 2% is not out of the question still for this year.
Yeah, I mean, I think the year could turn around, but I, I mean, just my humble opinion with, with China basically still locking down in certain areas, and we're already a month into the second quarter, I can't, I wouldn't be shocked if we were negative in the second quarter with what's going on in the world. And then, I mean, but my humble opinion, I'd rather get in and out of it quicker than just hang around later, so.
Right, right, and I agree. I mean, so far, the April has.
I would not be surprised if we had two quarters. Right.
Yeah, and April's been worse for the markets than the, the first quarter has been. So, uh, I think you're right.
And I just don't see major getting much better with what's going on globally.
Right, right, absolutely, yep. Um, yeah, we don't, I, I don't disagree much. Um, and of course, we have the added, uh, challenge of June 30th being the fiscal year-end. So, um, that, that's going to have an impact on that number, but.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to get that.
No, absolutely, it's, it's good to hear, hear some perspective. Anyone else have any comments before we get into the portfolio? Okay, hearing none, I will forward ahead. So you may have noticed that, um, we have a, uh, bit of a new portfolio or reporting structure. So these are some slides that you may not be used to seeing. Uh, just a quick recap on slide 22. Um, we did have some shifts in the portfolio last quarter. You'll remember that we previously had a target of 30% to fixed income. Although we had been intentionally underweight, we formally shifted the target down to 25% fixed income last quarter. We reshuffled a little bit the breakdown between domestic and international equity, and we increased the exposure to real assets. So all of those things took place in the, uh, in the first quarter, um, after the January meeting. And, um, here you will see, uh, a lot of information all on this one page. This is a new page, so it looks unfamiliar to you, I'm sure. Um, so if you start on the top right-hand side with the summary of cash flows, you can see that the ending market value, this is for the town pension plan, was, um, 15 million. And then you can see the performance relative to the benchmark on the top left-hand side. So, um, these numbers, um, the, the navy blue bars represent the portfolio's performance, and then the light blue bars represent the, the benchmark's performance. And, um, this is not what we like to see, which is that the portfolio has underperformed the benchmark, um, in, uh, across most time periods. Um, so obviously, when we're using active management, we want those active managers to be adding value, um, not detracting. So this is not a trend that we like to see. One thing that I will, um, keep, ask you to keep in mind is that we do have an absolute return objective, which is the actuarial return assumption of 6.75%. So if we think about portfolio performance in that context, you have not only met but exceeded that 6.75% return target, um, on a long-term basis. Um, on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see the allocation, uh, compared to the target. So for instance, fixed income, we've got a target of 25%. The actual was at 24.1, so you see a slight negative. So slightly underweight fixed, overweight domestic equity, underweight international equity, overweight real assets. But by and large, we're well, we're certainly well within the parameters of the investment policy statement, um, and we're actually pretty close to target. Um, and then the bottom left-hand side is simply a pie chart breakdown. Uh, if you're more visual and, uh, you like the pretty colors, that just shows the asset class exposure. And then on the following page, page 24, we again show the asset allocation. We show dollars that are allocated to each of the asset classes. So we've got about, as of the end of the quarter, we had about 100,000 in short-term liquidity, which is just money market, about 3.6 million in fixed income, so on and so forth, to bring you up to that $15 million asset value. And then what's important on this page is that we include the minimum and maximum allocation that is allowed based on the investment policy statement. So you have a minimum of 15% to fixed income and a max of 45% to fixed income for, um, uh, within the IPS. You are at 24%, you're well within the allowable ranges. So, um, I think this page is just important as kind of a checklist. Um, and then on page 25, this is a page that you're used to seeing. It just shows the asset allocation profile and, um, the dollars that are allocated to each of the underlying managers. So we won't vote on this item right now, but I want to tee up the voting item. Um, so we actually have two managers that have been moved from maintained to discuss status. And those two managers are the, um, Harding Lovner Emerging Markets Fund and the Principal Diversified Real Asset Fund. It's actually neither one of those managers that we're recommending replacing. Um, so the reason that those two managers have been moved, uh, from maintained to discuss status is because of impending portfolio management changes. Um, we're actually quite comfortable with the changes that are afoot. Um, and in the fact of Harding Lovner, they've actually had a really difficult time with performance. The numbers look terrible, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Um, but the person that will be taking over as portfolio manager has been running, uh, what they call a paper portfolio for many years, and that portfolio has actually done better than, um, the, the current Harding Lovner portfolio. So we are not uncomfortable with the portfolio manager changes that are transpiring. But anytime there's a significant change like that, we, uh, usually issue a discuss status. Um, all other managers are on maintain status, although today I am recommending that we replace Lazar. So we'll talk about that when it comes to that agenda item. Any questions about the overall allocation or any of the managers? All right, so page 26, uh, again, shows performance. You al- already saw it in graph format on the previous page, so, um, no need to belabor that point. Um, page 27 is a new page for you, and I think that, um, it's very interesting, and it tells, um, you know, kind of, it's a very telling story. So what we're looking at here is attribution over the last year. So on the top left-hand side, if we work our way from the bottom up, what you can see is that the total fund, that's the performance of the portfolio, returned 2.8% over the last year. The benchmark returned 3.1%. Therefore, you have 30 basis points of underperformance. Okay, so where did that underperformance come from? That's what the top right-hand side tells us. It tells us that asset allocation actually added to performance or contributed 20 basis points. So it wasn't asset allocation that was the problem, it was manager selection. So manager value added is negative 0.6%. So all of the problems lay within the managers. So in the bottom half of this page, the left-hand two graphs speak to asset allocation. So this, um, these aqua bars show the average active weight. So this shows us over the course of the past year, on average, you were 5.3% underweight to fixed income compared to your target. Because remember, we had that 30% fixed income target, but we, we carried that underweight intentionally. So, um, we were underweight fixed income, and that contributed to performance. If you look over at the next graph that says asset allocation value added. So we were underweight fixed, that added 20 basis points to relative performance. We were overweight domestic equity, that added 20 basis points to performance. So does this make sense, how to read this so far? Great.
Yep.
So the manager value added. Great, so the manager value added on the bottom right-hand side, that's what tells the story. And all of the relative underperformance came from the international equity segment of the portfolio. The fixed income managers were ahead, the domestic equity managers were ahead, and the alternatives, which is the real assets, right in line. It's the international equity managers that were the problem. Lazar, which we're recommending replacing, is one of those problems. Harding-Lovner also underperformed over the past year, but long-term, we have conviction in the strategy. I'll talk about some of the causes of underperformance, but at this point in time, we are not recommending making a change away from Harding-Lovner. Any questions about attribution? Okay, so I'll breeze through this. The next few pages are the manager performance overview. So the kind of periwinkle blue lines show the asset class composite performance. And then underneath that, we have all of the individual manager strategies. So fixed income, on a year-to-date basis, you're about in line with the benchmark, down 6.2% compared to 6.3%. The kind of traditional managers have been about in line with the benchmark, a little bit behind. The BlackRock Strategic Income Opportunities Fund, which is the flexible kind of defensive fixed income play, that has added a lot of value. PGIM has been behind. It was a difficult environment for global fixed income. But that's also a very small percentage of the portfolio, less than 2%. So collectively speaking, on a year-to-date basis, the fixed income managers are about in line. And on a one-year basis, the fixed income managers, although they're still negative, they are not as negative as the benchmark. So particularly, that BlackRock fund ended up being helpful over the course of the past year. Domestic equity, a little bit ahead on a fiscal year-to-date basis, up 3.6%, and then ahead also on a one-year basis, up 11.2% compared to 10.6. So the domestic equity segment of the portfolio has been the brightest performer. And that's largely due to the active small mid-cap funds. So you've got Diamond Hill on the value side, Conestoga on the growth side. Both of them substantially outperformed their respective benchmarks on a one-year basis. And then it's the international equity segment of the portfolio that's really struggled, down 5.8% over the past year, whereas the international equity benchmark was only down 2.4%. So you actually have really substantial outperformance from MFS, which is your developed manager that has more of a growth tilt. And then you have substantial underperformance from Lazar, which is your international manager that has the value tilt. And then Harding-Lovner, really substantial underperformance. You might wonder why we're recommending replacing Lazar rather than Harding-Lovner. Harding-Lovner, a lot of this story is Russia. So they came into the end of the calendar year 2021, beginning of 2022, with about 8% exposure to Russia. Obviously, that got marked down to zero. And then all of their commodity exposure was through Russia. So when you compare it against the Emerging Markets Index or other emerging market funds that have different country weightings, those funds in that index had exposure to commodities throughout the course of the quarter. All of Harding-Lovner's Russian exposures got marked down to zero. That was their only commodity exposure, so they didn't benefit from the increase in commodities. So that's why you see such substantial underperformance over the course of the first quarter. And, you know, they did have some performance struggles in 2021 as well. I talked to the analyst about it. He said that he still has conviction in the Harding-Lovner approach in their philosophy and their buy-and-sell decisions. And he said that he thinks that we should give him another quarter or two, and he thinks they may bounce back. So we are suggesting patience for that strategy. When it comes to Lazar, there is underperformance really across all timeframes. So going back to the last five years, going back to the inception of this strategy in the portfolio, they're 1.7 percentage points behind on a year, on an annual basis. And really, it's not as much the underperformance that is cause for concern here. It's a lack of conviction in their investment strategy, and there are a couple red flags that we've identified. One is that there were a couple holdings in the portfolio that they eliminated from the portfolio, not because the investment thesis had changed or any of the fundamental factors had changed. It was because the companies indicated that earnings might be negative for the quarter, and it kind of seemed like a reaction to market sentiment. So it was not a sell decision that was based on any sort of fundamental research. It was kind of anticipatory, which always, you know, we don't want to see that. We want to see a manager that has conviction in their holdings. And then they also had a couple names that really missed, where their thesis just didn't play out at all. You know, it seems like some of their inputs may have been inaccurate. So that is a strategy that we have really lost confidence in in terms of their ability to provide outperformance in the future. So when it comes to that part of the meeting agenda, we will, I'll make a recommendation to replace Lazar, but that just gives you the background. So I will take the, oh, and then I, the only positive part of the portfolio is the Principal Diversified Real Asset Fund. And we've talked about this in the past. This has exposure to tips, commodities, natural resource equities, real estate, a whole bunch of things throughout the real assets market. Obviously, that's been a great place to be, not only so far this quarter, but over the course of the last fiscal year and the one year. So you see some strong results from that. So before we get into OPEB, I'll take a pause. Any questions, anything you want me to talk about in more detail?
Yeah, David, I just want to, I thanks for the, I was gonna ask you some of the more granular thoughts behind Lazar recommendations, so I appreciate you getting to that. But just for the record, on the document, it still says maintain for Lazar.
Correct. So that's, that's our, yep, that's from our manager research group. So the manager research group assigns a status each quarter. So they have not, from our internal investment committee, they have not been formally moved to discuss, watch, or terminate. But the writing's on the wall. So when I talked to the analyst, he said, you know, probably next quarter, we will be recommending that clients move away. So we'd rather get out in front of that if we can.
Yeah, I don't, I understand. Yeah, I would too. I'm just concerned from a fiduciary responsibility of the committee not having a formal, it's not even a discuss status. How can we get on the record, on the minutes here, that that's the firm's recommendation that we're, you know, be very sensitive to some of the legal responsibilities of our fiduciary, you know, responsibilities as a committee, that's all.
Right, I mean, from a fiduciary standpoint, you can, you can make a decision to move in or out of a manager based on any.
Any reason, right?
Any reason. It doesn't, I don't think it needs to directly correlate. And within your investment policy statement, there's also some language that says, you know, there may be many causes for termination. Some of them might include, and I think all of the things that I talked about are covered within the IPS.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning our, I'm not questioning our authority. I'm concerned about the legal exposure. There are, there are increasing cases of lawsuits being filed against committees that end up having under, you know, performance of their pensions that are not, you know, are perceived to be under par and having losses that they attribute to poor decisions of the committee. So I just want to make sure that this committee has solid, you know, backup and background. And I just, I concerned about a report that says something contrary to what you're recommending. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I just want, I don't, I want it to be more clear as to what the, you know, what the firm's recommendation is. And kind of have that.
And we do have Ken.
I mean, I think the recommendation, exactly, it's on the agenda, is the recommendation for replacement. And I think she's eloquently explained why, to the point where, you know, we're explaining why we're replacing somebody who did better than somebody else, but at a very logical, reasonable explanation. So I have no, I have no hesitation on following her recommendation. And I think it's well documented and well, you know, it's reflected in the record.
It's perspective, it's not documented, it's perspective. Well, we're getting a perspective, it's not documented to.
Correct, always had opinion, but I mean, it's on the, I mean, it's, her explanation is on the record, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
You know, this meeting is recorded, and her explanation is very logical to me.
I, I agree with that. I just, I don't, I don't think the minutes are typically that detailed. So we're gonna have to ask the secretary to make sure that they're very detailed minutes, because again, I, I'm not quite, I'm not questioning the decision. I just, I want to make sure we're, okay?
Okay. There is a third, there is another document which explains their recommendation.
That'd be great.
That'll, so while we're discussing that though, are, can I just bring up Harding-Lovner? And I guess my concern is more with them than Lazar, just because they had so much Russian exposure. I would assume their Russian exposure doesn't exist anymore. But I guess the question is, is the conviction is there to remain with them when they kind of got caught in a bad spot already? I guess that's where my, my concern is.
Yep, I, I completely understand. It does make sense. I mean, emerge, it's a dedicated emerging markets manager. Most emerging markets managers did have exposure to Russia. Their exposure happened to be a bit overweight relative to Russia's weight in the index. I think, you know, a lot of times, sector allocation can have a significant impact. So when they inadvertently ended up with zero exposure to commodities, because all of their Russian holdings had been marked down and commodities were the only thing that produced any sort of positive return in the quarter, you know, that, that's gonna take its toll.
Was, was that their only Russian exposure commodities or?
Yes.
So they had no other Russian exposure?
It was four commodity-related names.
So it was kind of a double whammy?
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
And I, I mean, I look at it like 8% is, you know, obviously gonna affect the weight, but it's not a, they weren't 50% invested in Russia and missed it. You know, when you're in emerging markets, is not a huge, huge exposure. I mean, it's obviously a little overweighted, but it's not crazy position by any means. And my assumption is, did you say that it's marked to zero?
Yes.
Because, you know, it might not end up being zero, but in this environment, you have to mark it to zero.
Mark to market, yeah.
Right.
Correct, but, you know, there's a very good chance it won't end up being zero, which will bounce back.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, Ron. Right, the, the performance looks terrible. I do not disagree with you on that. This, I think, you know, comes back to the idea of manager research being more art than science. So, okay, here you have a manager that had much more substantial underperformance compared to the manager that we're recommending replacing. They did not deviate from their stated investment philosophy or the process that they followed year over year, whereas Lazar did deviate from that process, and that's what raised the red flag for us, so.
And my assumption is these type of funds are gonna be much riskier than your domestic funds. Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes.
I mean, that's why we use them and we use them small, because they do have much more volatility and risk than typical funds.
Right.
So, so, and I apologize, this is, I don't know if this question's gonna make sense, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. So for Lazar, the reasons for them deviating in the, in the world we're in today, did those reason, do you evaluate the reasons why they deviated?
Well, we tried to get to the bottom of it, and they didn't have what we thought was a viable explanation. And, you know, a lot of times, so Lazar's performance has struggled for quite a few years now. And a lot of times, you see managers that are in that situation kind of begin to panic. And so they think, oh, I hear about this company that's in my portfolio. The earnings guidance is negative. I, we don't want to get caught with another, you know, poorly performing holding, so let's get out of it. But the fundamentals hadn't changed, their investment thesis hadn't changed. The reason they put it in the portfolio, all those reasons were still there. Yet they got out because they were afraid of negative market sentiment. So we don't like that, you know, that's a manager bowing down to what, what broad markets and, you know, broad investor sentiment says, which is not, that's not an investment philosophy. That's just following the pack, you know?
Right, and we'd have an index fund if we wanted that.
Right. So we can certainly, you know, we can come to you next quarter with a replacement for Harding-Lovner if they don't turn things around. I'm not saying that they're, you know, we should keep them in the portfolio forever. But the analyst said, I think if you give them a quarter or two, they'll be in a better place. We still have conviction in the strategy. But I'm certainly happy to accept the committee's guidance.
My, my view on this would be the, following the, the recommendation for sure, but also having that recommendation for a replacement ready, so that if after the next quarter or the next two quarters, we find that that's not the case, that there's not a bounce back happening, we have something ready and another manager kind of in the, in the wings there, ready to go. If, if we find that, rather than just waiting and then having to wait again for a new manager to be, to be prepared, to kind of be ready to be, suggest.
Yep, absolutely, we will do that.
Yeah, and I think traditionally over the years, you know, they've always been ready with a recommendation as soon as we're ready to make a move. It's not something we've ever had to wait and figure out who we're going to. I think there's been excellent guidance over the years. We've always followed the recommendations, knock wood. It's worked out exactly as we needed to plan-wise and return-wise. So, you know, my feeling is to certainly keep following the recommendations. If you look at the long-term performance, which is what we all eat, all we care about is the long-term performance of this portfolio, because it's a pension plan. We're hitting every number over the long term. So my feeling is until that changes, we're gonna follow the recommendations, and it worked out great for us so far.
Okay, thank you for everyone's comments. Any questions before we move on to OPEB?
I'm good.
All right, and this will be much quicker, because there's nothing interesting in the OPEB plan. So if we look.
Devin, we're not gonna go through BOE, just, it's basically status quo.
Exactly, same, same exact portfolio as the Town, same return profile, same general assets.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks. Okay, so page 52 shows the portfolio dashboard for the OPEB. So that portfolio is at about 1.8 million. And again, you can see all of the performance relative and absolute on the top left-hand side. On a three-year basis, that portfolio is returning 9.6% per year, right about in line with the benchmark. And again, that is all passively managed, so no, no chance of outperformance there, because we don't have any active managers. So you can see the asset allocation profile on the bottom right-hand side, a little bit underweight fixed income. We're a little bit overweight cash. So the overweight to cash is what led the fixed and the international equity to be a little bit under. And then you can see the portfolio holdings on page 54. So again, all passive Vanguard Total Bond Market Index, Vanguard 500 Index, which tracks the S&amp;P, Extended Market Index, which is small and mid-cap, and then Total International Stock Market, which includes developed and emerging markets. and then total international stock market, which includes developed and emerging markets. And then we have the Vanguard REIT Fund. So, you know, kind of plain vanilla performance, tracking the benchmark. And, you know, pretty solid annualized returns since the inception. So certainly happy to talk about anything in more detail there, but there's less meat on the bone with the OPEB plan. All right. Any questions before we show the international equity manager search?
Yeah, Devin, I have one question just on process-wise. So I know, you know, our assumption right now is sitting at 6.75%. At what point, I mean, is it after we do the next valuation that we would review that? What was the, what's the right process and when would we look at that again, in your opinion?
Yeah, I don't think that there's, you know, necessarily like a great guideline of, okay, this is the right time to do it. It is too bad that, like I said, the 2021 valuation is not being done, because I think you would have shown a substantial improvement in funded status, which could have allowed you to then bring down the return assumption and not really have an impact on contributions, because the funded status would have been better. So it's usually a conversation that Hooker and Holcomb would bring up and would say, you know, so when they're doing their val reports and they're putting that return assumption in, they always ask us for our capital market assumptions and the asset allocation profile to see what the expected return assumption of the portfolio is and to see if the actuarial return assumption can be justified by the portfolio structure and by our return assumptions. So there is discussion between us and Hooker and Holcomb. I think that we looked at, let's see, I do have your last quarter report up. And we did do an asset allocation analysis and your portfolio came out with an expected return on a 20-year basis of 7%. So certainly justifiable long-term. The 10-year outlook is a little bit weaker. So that return expectation is 6.1%, which is asset class exposure only. So you would expect over time, of course, it hasn't been the case recently, but you would expect active management to add alpha above that 6.1%. So, you know, the actuary is using a long-term return assumption, so 20 years is not unreasonable for them. So certainly the current portfolio, it justifies that 6.75%. You could bring it down. That's, you know, more conservative and a lot of folks are moving in that direction. So.
Now, will we get the new valuation, Ron, at the end of June? Is that what the?
The, it'll be, the valuation will be done as of, I believe it's July 1st, June 30th. And we'll typically get it, I'm going to say, five to six months after that. So right, right around the end of the calendar year.
Just in time to budget our A-dec.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was figuring. I mean, to me, it makes sense to review that once we get the new valuation, because it'll be much more accurate information. But I think that's, I always wonder why it takes five months to do that when you think this is a computer system, we could run this through, but.
It's a delicate genius.
You would think in today's world, that could be done a little quicker.
Yeah.
Well, it's a process. It's us getting them the information. It's them processing the information and it's them working around all their other clients too. I mean, that's the reality.
Exactly. Maybe we'll push a little harder this time. All right, that's all I had. Sorry to digress. I wanted to get that on the record.
No, that's an important question. All right, so that's it for the report. Are we okay to move on to the voting recommendation?
Absolutely.
Great. So let me bring this up. Ken, this is a document that I sent over to Ron and Heidi, so you do have something in the records.
Yeah, we have it over here now as well. And this is exactly, this is exactly all, this is what I was looking for. So this is.
Devin, I think there was like a 24-hour lag.
Yes.
You getting it to us and us sending it out.
Yep. Yep. Sorry about that. So we have shown, we've included a manager search here in the back part of the document. And we've shown two managers alongside Lazard. One is Dodge and Cox, the other is Oakmark. We are recommending Dodge and Cox as the more appealing replacement for Lazard. So as you can see on this page, we'd like to eliminate Lazard, move them from a 10% target to zero, and then introduce Dodge and Cox International at a 10% target. Dodge and Cox is a developed market strategy that has a value tilt. MFS is also developed market. They have a growth tilt, so they're good complements to each other. We actually use Dodge and Cox in most of our discretionary portfolios, where we have discretion and ownership over manager changes. So it's widely used throughout the practice. When you compare it, I'm certainly happy to get into more details. When you compare it to Lazard, it has more portfolio holdings. So we like that. There's less concentration risk. And then if you compare it to Oakmark, which is the other strategy that we could replace Lazard with, Dodge and Cox is much less volatile than Oakmark. So Oakmark, you see a very choppy performance history. So they tend to be in, you know, the top quartile or the bottom quartile, but not very often in the middle. So, you know, that kind of volatility, especially alongside Harding-Lovner, which inherently has a pretty volatile return stream. I think we'd like to avoid that. So our recommendation is to replace Lazard International Equity with Dodge and Cox International. It has the added benefit of being cheaper as well.
I was going to say, they're a little bit cheaper too.
Yep. So certainly happy to go into more details if you'd like. There are a lot of data points within the search presentation, but in the interest of time, I don't want to keep you all here all night.
Yeah, why don't we start with, somebody wants to make a motion on this? And then we can leave there any more discussion we want to have.
This is just for the pension.
Yeah.
All right. Make a motion to replace Lazard International Equity R6, going from 10% to 0% and replacing it with Dodge and Cox International, going from 0% currently to 10%.
Seconded.
All right, now we can have any discussions, questions we want to ask, anything further. I'm comfortable with the explanation and the strategy approach, so I'm good.
I'm good.
I think we had a good amount of discussion and explanation. And I just want to make sure that that additional form that came in is going to be made part of the record. So I would just ask that, that is made part of.
Make sure that's in the minutes. All right, anybody else further discussion?
Heidi, if you could just forward Diane the international equity recommendation. Or Diane, if you could let us, we'll get that to you, so you can include that in the minutes.
And we will get the paperwork together to make that portfolio change and Ron will get it off to you for your signature.
All right, so we have anybody opposed?
Hello? Oh, okay. I'll put you on speaker. No problem. You're on speaker. Jason's still in the meeting. The computer kicked him out.
All right, anybody opposed? Hearing none. We are approved unanimously.
All right.
Ocean to adjourn.
That's it for me.
I was going to say, I didn't even have to ask for it this time. Wow! He wants to get home for dinner.
I do.
I still got another hour and six minutes on the road. Perfect. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, Devin, as usual.